January meeting for the AMSA Board of Trustees. First, I'd like to appoint a timekeeper if anybody would like to volunteer. And I see SAC raising his hand.
Yep, I'll do it.
Trustworthy timekeeper. Now you're stuck with that role.
I know.
Great job. I'm gonna stop asking maybe. And so I believe we need to do a roll call, right? Who's on the call?
All right. So present. Let's see Bella Gorman, Ben Hamel, Don Capello, Jill Schaefer, Laura Burgess, Maura Webster, Nick Poirier, Raul Porras, Roger Jarrett, Sheila Kelly, and Zachary Prescott.
Thank you. And I see we have a couple guests. Welcome. Bella, did we get any requests for public comment?
No, we did not.
Is anybody that's on the call would like to give any public comment? Right, here we go. Yes, there is no public comment for today. And let's move on to the votes to get the administrative things out of the way. The minutes from my December was still a special board meeting in December, right? So a special board meeting on December 1st were attached. Does anybody have any questions or ready to vote on the minutes and approving the minutes from the December meeting?
I would make a motion to approve the minutes from the December meeting. This is Sheila.
May I just, may I add though that the November 17th meeting was the special one and the December 1st one was our regular meeting?
Thank you.
Clarification, December 1st was declared as a special meeting because we were approving a bylaw change. So it was a, from a nomenclature perspective, it was, it was a declared as a special meeting.
Okay, it was pre-scheduled.
It was pre-scheduled, but it is, it is a special meeting because we modified the bylaws. Or made a, made a rec.
Who made the second? I'm sorry.
There wasn't one yet.
I'll second Roger.
Roger, Roger's second.
Roger, okay.
Those in favor?
I have to call?
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Okay, Bella Gorman?
Yes.
Ben Hamel?
Yes.
Don Capello? Jill Schaefer?
Epstein?
Okay, Laura Burgess?
Yes.
Maura Webster?
Yes.
Nick Poirier?
Yes.
Raul Porras?
Yes.
Roger Jarrett?
Yes.
Sheila Kelly?
Yes.
Zachary Prescott?
Yes.
That's everyone.
The motion passes. Thank you, Sarah. See what happens when you go in person once and now try to look like we're in person.
That's right.
Right now, I'm gonna turn it over to Roger. There's a couple of things that we talked about in the last board meeting and that. So you've been warned that we weren't gonna bring this up for our vote today and have to do with finance decisions. So Roger, I'll turn it over to you to talk about the chiller and the, and the bank account changes.
All right. So first, the first vote is to approve the purchase of a chiller to replace a failing unit at AMSA. It has a cost of $313,866. And this is, this has been approved by the Finance Committee and needs, and needs to come to the board because the amount, because of the amount of the purchase.
Nathan, no.
I make a motion to approve.
Just make a quick question before we we approve it. The, I know we have like a capital plan and that's one of the things that we're reviewing for the, making the decision for the building. And I believe there was lines in that capital plan that have to do with things like this. So yes, we're adding to the budget, but it's not like we're adding for something that we had and already planned for, kind of considering our, and our finances. Is that correct?
Um, somewhat. I mean, we, so we, we have a financial capital plan looking forward. The failure of this particular unit wasn't in that capital plan, but there was a parallel. There was a plan for a additional heating work for the lower school. So it's sort of overlapped, but it's not a one for one replacement for an item in the capital plan. I mean, the actually, the good news was it was less, less than the item that it was replacing.
We certainly have known for months that this was coming and have talked to finance about it and gave everyone a heads up that it was coming down the pike. So yeah, definitely something that's been known.
Thank you. That helps. I'm sorry, Nick, but I got anywhere.
Was there other questions? I think we're.
No problem, Raul. So I'll make a motion to approve this. Feelings aren't hurt.
I'll second that to make sure.
There we go. We're on the same team as we always are.
And Raul, you're second, right?
I did.
Okay. All right. You want me to call?
Yes, please.
Bella Gorman?
Yes.
Ben Hamel?
Yes.
Don Capello?
Yes.
Jill Schaefer?
Yes.
Laura Burgess?
Yes.
Maura Webster?
Yes.
Nick Poirier?
Yes.
No, Raul Porras?
Yes.
Roger Jarrett?
Yes.
Sheila Kelly?
Yes.
And Zachary Prescott. That's everyone.
Yes.
The motion passes. Let's get ourselves a new chiller.
Let's get the new chiller before we need the air conditioning, which probably isn't gonna happen. Chiller is, is 38 to 40 weeks out. It will be like mid-August. So you know, it's gonna be a great summer.
Yeah.
All right, Roger about the bank account?
Yes.
No, we talked about this, yeah.
We talked about this in the past, but I'll do a brief summary that and it's provided by Leanna. Currently, our money is held at Boston Private, which is now been acquired and Silicon Valley Bank is our, our bank. We have, we have a majority of our money in a money market count right now and we were seeking official permission to create one or more bank accounts that are insured because the money market account is only insured up to $250,000 and we would like to, as our account, as, as the audit described, that we wanted our money in a completely 100% insured account. So that's the background of it. So so the most, particular motion I'm gonna make is giving permission for the administration to create one or more accounts for AMSA that are of the insured variety where 100% of the balance is insured.
Any questions? So I'll, if there's no question, I can make the motion. And then, sorry, do you get the text just like Roger?
Yes, pretty sure.
I'll second the motion. It's Ben.
Okay.
If there's a vocal?
Bella Gorman?
Yes.
Ben Hamel?
Yes.
Don Capello?
Yes.
Jill Schaefer?
Yes.
Laura Burgess?
Yes.
Maura Webster?
Yes.
Nick Poirier?
Yes.
Raul Porras?
Yes.
Roger Jarrett?
Yes.
Sheila Kelly?
Yes.
And Zachary Prescott?
Yes.
And the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And the last vote that we have for today is, and I need to apologize because it's an oversight on my end on what things we need to bring to the, for a vote at the beginning of the school year, but it's our calendar, our school calendar. So it's attached in the, in the packet. Basically, for those that may not be familiar with, with our responsibility as a board, we approve the calendar every year just to ensure that we're having enough instruction time throughout the, the school year, which is one of the requirements from these and part of our governance duty. So that calendar that's there explains, you know, what those days are, what the days, the holidays and whatnot. So you guys all should be familiar with that. So we're basically approving that we have reviewed that and then that's, that's gonna be the calendar for the year, even though we're now in January. So I don't think there's much of a discussion needed unless anybody has any questions.
Just a clarification, Raul. This, with the calendar we're approving is for the 2324 school year.
I'm sorry, the starting in, right, it's the next school year, sorry.
Yeah, and it's really just counting the 180 days. We go well over the hours, even with our, our half days in there. And also those half days and things like that. Typically, we post this initial calendar. It's really just a skeleton. We don't even usually have the half days in there, but they, they are a little ahead of ourselves this year. They are in there, proposed. And then just the academic warning dates and things like that, which typically, once again, are not in this version of the calendar that we usually put out at this time of year. And it's really just to help families to schedule vacations and whatnot.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the calendar for the 2324 school year.
I'll second.
Roger's second, but SAC.
All right. Bella Gorman?
Yes.
Benjamin Hamel?
Yes.
Don Capello?
Yes.
Jill Schaefer?
Yes.
Laura Burgess?
Yes.
Maura Webster?
Yes.
Nick Poirier?
Yes.
Raul Porras?
Yes.
Roger Jarrett?
Yes.
Sheila Kelly?
Yes.
And Zachary Prescott?
Yes.
The motion passes. Thank you, Sarah. All right, moving on to consent items. I don't believe we have anything on the consent agenda.
No, it wasn't.
There may not, well, the committees may not have met since our last meeting. But I guess we'll hear from the reports. So with that, I'll turn it over to Sheila who's getting us, if you remember in the last meeting, we talked about doing OML training and I think, I'm looking forward to hear from Sheila because the, the idea was to summarize and have more of a discussion on the, on the key items. We all have access to the, the webinars and all the training that's out there from the state. But doing this more of a discussion, so I, I know that she has something prepared. So I'll turn it over to you, Sheila, and I'm sure we're gonna ask you questions.
All right, I am going to share my screen. And this is pretty neat, like Raul said, this is pretty brief in the sense that I, I just want, you know, this is something we do annually and it's important for us to keep you know, up to date and just mindful of what is expected and what we are obligated to do under OML. So you know, with that in mind, obviously, the biggest thing right now for a lot of us is what we're doing right now, which is virtual meetings. So obviously, due to the COVID pandemic, then Governor Baker, because we have a new governor today. Then Governor Baker had passed a motion to or an order to let public bodies meet virtually. That has been extended several times. It is currently extended until March 31st. So I anticipate Governor Healy will have something for us prior to March 31st about continuing to hold virtual meetings. So right now, that allows us to meet without a quorum in a physical place. You know, as long as we provide what they call adequate alternatives, access to those meetings. So we do that by what we're doing right now, by live streaming through Facebook or providing call-in information or recordings, all those things. So we've really covered our bases with regard to that, but we are good through our March meeting for virtual and we will continue to update you guys as we get information from the executive branch on that. Oh, I don't know what happened with that. There we go. Um, huh. I don't know why that picture is coming through. All right. Um, the, I'm trying to think of the FAQ that I, that got screwed up on that last slide. Hold on, I'm gonna go back to that one more time. All right. So what that actually, what that question was, was what actually is a quorum? And what do we do about quorums? And so a quorum is a majority of the board. And the reason that's important is if we have a majority of our board discussing something that's in our jurisdiction, that needs to be done in a public meeting that is posted and that the public has knowledge of and the right to attend. So you know, I think I've given this example before. When we were at the kickoff for the Capitol campaign, at one point, Raul and I, and Bella, and I forget who else was standing around a table and we were like, all right, we can't talk about anything during the school because we had, you know, so many people there around one table. So I just need people to be mindful of that, that when you're, you know, when we're in either a social setting or a school setting, if we're all at a school event, that we really shouldn't be discussing things that are germane to our function as trustees, because that would potentially violate the open meeting law. So the next one I had is may trustees communicate over email. And this is another one that gets tricky and I think people forget about it sometimes because we're so anxious to discuss something or give feedback or all of that. So yes, when we're doing our committee work, when we're doing some board work, we will send out information. You know, Sarah sends out a lot of info and that's fine. Like to send out things for information purposes is absolutely fine, to send out agendas, reports, things we need to review to be prepared for a meeting. It's just that we cannot have a dialogue or discussion about those over the emails. So you know, the biggest thing that can happen is someone replies all and states an opinion or something along those lines. And we just cannot do that. So you know, I would ask people to, when you're talking about your committee work or when we're talking about the board, you know, just keep those questions. You can reach out to the, you know, committee chair, you can, you know, but we just can't have group discussions about that even over email. Excuse me. This is one that's come up a lot and there's been some case law that has come down on it, which is may trustees communicate with the public through social media. And the short answer is yes, we can. You know, I know a lot of people are on AMSA chat or I know all the towns have parent sites. A lot of the classes graduating years have parent sites. And it's fine for us to be communicating on that. Again, we should not be deliberating with each other. You know, if Raul comments on, and I'm sorry to keep picking on you, Raul, but you're at the top of my screen. If Raul comments on something, I shouldn't then be saying, hey, this is, you know, what we're dealing with or, you know, we just shouldn't be having those discussions now. I don't know that there's gonna be something on Facebook or Twitter that we are discussing about the school, but I just ask people to be cautious about that. But it doesn't mean that we can't post or we can't share things on social media. So like, like we said, the idea today wasn't to go through the entire open meeting law and, and talk about that. The department, the state has trainings that they do periodically. They've really moved them. They used to do them regionally and have live trainings. But now they've really moved since COVID to webinar-only trainings and they intend to continue to do that through March. So right now, there's two on the books. In January, I put this, I know Sarah is gonna have this information out because I provided it to her a few hours ago. But these are those two upcoming trainings, if anyone is interested in more of a thorough overview. But there are a few things with open meeting, obviously. The quorum thing is huge. The fact that we, and Sarah does a phenomenal job of this with our committee meetings and our board meeting of posting what our meetings are, how to gain access to them. Accessibility for, you know, when we're doing live meetings, they have to be accessible to people with disabilities. We have to make those accommodations if they're necessary. You know, the other thing is obviously not discussing things with a quorum when we're not in a public meeting. And we have, you know, I'm gonna actually click to the next slide. So the other thing that we talked about a lot last year, because we were having a lot of executive sessions as we were purchasing the buildings and we had the CBA negotiations with the teachers' union, but you know, we have to keep minutes in all meetings. So, in all public meetings. So we have to keep minutes in our committee meetings. We have to keep minutes, good minutes in our board meetings. We also keep minutes in our executive session meetings. And once the reason for that executive session, whether it's negotiation, whether it's legal matters, whatever, is resolved, there is an opportunity for people to request those minutes. So it is important that we have them. And Jill has done a great job going through and kind of getting some historical minutes together so that we have all that and we can provide that if necessary. So those are kind of the big things. So the state actually has some pretty good checklists out there. There's one for executive session. There's one for meeting posting and there's one for how to keep, or what you need to keep minutes. So I put all those links as well and I can I'll click on one just for an example. You know, the minutes one, you know, that they have to include summaries of what were discussed, a record of all decisions that were made, a record of the vote, which is you know, why that's important, why Sarah calls the rules. And that includes in executive session as well, that we have to keep records of those votes. And that they're approved in a timely manner. So that's why we do that every time we come back together as a group like we just did for the December meeting. So that's kind of the overview. I know there's lots of things that people might have questions about. And I, you know, we can absolutely, I'll entertain any of those questions or discussions that you wanna have. It is really, it is a serious thing, you know. The whole idea behind open meeting is just that we deliberate and talk about a lot of things that affect a lot of families and they have a right to know how that process works. You know, so it's that goal of transparency and, and goal of information sharing with our stakeholders. And that is, you know, very important. And people can file a complaint if they feel like there's been a violation of open meeting law and there are repercussions for that as well. So that's kind of the quick overview. I hope that wasn't too quick, but if people have questions, please let me know.
I just want to add a quick comment while people come up with their questions is that it's important not only for us to know it so we adhere to this, but I hope everybody listening and everybody in the community understands that we have to comply with this because sometimes it's easy to think, you know, the board could be more efficient in decision-making. The board could be better at just quickly doing things and, you know, why do we have to wait until a board meeting to make a vote? You know, it takes a month to, anything to happen. And this is one of the reasons. So there's a side effect of open meaning law, which is an unintended consequence of, of the law that it makes us, it makes it harder for us to work as a team. So bear with that because we have to comply with the law. So as much as we would love to be more efficient, we, we still need to comply with this. So you know, that's, that's one thing that's worth, I mean, it's evident to us as we're trying to do things more efficiently, but for people that might not be familiar with these limitations, just, just be aware of this is a thing. And then, I know I heard this before and just to make sure everybody knows this, when we talk about quorum, Dacey chain matters. So you can't say if I talk to Sheila and Bella, that's three of us. So I'm good. And then I'm gonna go and talk to SAC and Maura and Ben and Jill in a separate meeting that's four of us. So we're fine, or five, or whatever that number was. It's not because when you add all those people up, we all, it's, it's a quorum. So it doesn't mean that you don't only count the quorum in a specific meeting or session or, you know, situation. It's, if we're talking about the same topic, it, it adds up. So that's one of the things to be careful about, especially with email, because again, you're emailing some folks and maybe adding to that list.
And when you're emailing opinion and dialogue in that way, that is deliberation. Like I know that, you know, people might wanna parse the semantics of the word deliberation. The courts don't really have a lot of patience for that. Email opinions and email things like that are deliberation. So I just, you know, I just caution people, not that we do this, but I just caution people about kind of trying to take liberties with that. And I get that it slows things down and I, and I know that that can be frustrating. I think what it is trying to avoid is what, you know, a lot of people think of when they think of old school government, which is backroom discussions and things being done out of the public eye and without transparency. And this really combats that. And, and so that's the reason for that delay. Like Raul said, it can be frustrating, but there's a purpose to it.
Now, here's my one question and then I'll turn it over for anybody else that may have a question. And it's that definition of deliberation because it would be great if we felt more comfortable clarifying factual information without providing opinion. And I know that's kind of a slippery slope, but I'm gonna use a recent example with finance.
Sure.
The finance meeting was a conversation about, you know, the buckets of money we have and, you know, making sure we're comfortable with understanding the decision that we need to make soon about the building.
Yep.
And that requires certain discussion of where's the money, you know, how much do we have, where, you know, what are the different buckets? And the meeting might not have been enough for that. And you know, the decisions will follow up offline. And the minute you say that, then offline means that we need to be below a quorum because, you know, it's an offline meeting. Now, those meetings, I would argue are to clarify factual information. They're not to deliberate. So where do you draw, how do we draw the line? How can we be comfortable?
I think if you had a factual question like what are the accounts available for this or what are the balances in those accounts, just to try to keep with your example, I think providing that information, that's factual, that's but it's not deliberative. So I think that kind of thing is okay, like fact, you know, fact sharing. But I think that would be the extent of how far I would go with that. And Jill, I don't know if you wanna chime in on that at all, but I would be very cautious about anything beyond kind of factual clarifications.
I mean, I can read the definition if that helps. I mean, it's, it's, it's a, it's a matter of interpretation, but I would, I would be more cautious.
Yeah.
And because the definition states an oral or written communication through any medium between or among a quorum of a public body on any public business within its jurisdiction. So it, it's a broad, like you said, slippery slope. It's a broad definition and then it comes down to, into an interpretation, but if you have all those elements, it's considered a deliberation.
Yeah.
So.
But you're also, your example is. Yeah, but your example is talking about something that was openly discussed in a committee meeting. Is that correct or no?
Yes, but the, the discussion wasn't enough for everybody to feel like we knew the details.
Yeah.
That's where it, based on that definition, the details are material for the jurisdiction of the board, even though the details are not an opinion.
But if you provided that information, you guys would have to come back together, present that in a public forum at your next committee meeting and vote on it, correct?
Right.
So then I look at that as the same as us sharing agenda and backup packet information prior to committee or board meeting. You know, all that information becomes public and, you know, yeah, so again, I think kind of factual clarifications moving towards another open meeting are are part of that packet, yeah.
I'll just be careful. This is the bottom line from.
I know. It's one of those things and I'm very conservative because I'm licensed and I would like to stay that way. If you practice law, if I have a doubt, then my answer to myself is usually if I have a doubt, then I shouldn't be doing it. You know what I mean? So if you're pausing to think about it, then I would maybe wait for the next open meeting of that committee or that board to clarify.
Plus, plus Sheila, if anyone does have a question or a doubt, they can reach out to governance. They can reach out to you.
Absolutely.
And copy Raul and just we can answer the, the question.
Oh, yeah. And people have done that and that's absolutely fine. Yeah. And actually, if we have a quandary, we can reach out to the state and ask for clarification as well. Any other questions?
More, more a comment than a question. Well, first, thank you for the presentation. It's great. You know, and Raul's comment about waiting a month for a meeting, we can, as a board or as a committee, we can, we can call a special meeting. We can call an additional meeting of a committee or of the board as long as we provide two day, 48 hours.
48 hours, yeah.
48 hour, two business days notice ahead of time. So we do have flexibility, especially with the ability to remote, for remote meetings for the end of March. That we, we do have some flexibility. We're not bound to months a month only.
Right.
But there, but the flexibility is limited. We must post an agenda and call the meeting with, with two days notice.
Yeah, and that makes me think of another limitation. If, if I think of something right now that we should discuss, I, we can't discuss it here because it wasn't on the agenda. Right? So it would have to be related to the things that are in the current agenda to, for it to be okay to be discussed.
Correct, because you need the 48 hour notice, yeah. So I can click on the posting checklist real quick towards that. Um. So I'm just wondering if it just got, if it. Yeah, it might not get that uh. Technical. All right, forget it. That wasn't as helpful as I thought it was. All right, any other questions?
I just have, I guess, a comment and also give a example of what happened to me, I think, when I first joined the board. Um first, the comment is, uh this has been really hard for me because. Um it's hard to get work done, I think, with the open meeting laws and I guess to echo what Raul has said um as. To the pub, you know, to the AMSA community who's watching this, I think that's one of um our limitations. Is being able to work efficiently um and and get things done. Um it has to be done in a public manner and we have to follow the open meeting laws. Um and it can be, it can cause barriers sometimes. Um and that's what I've found. Um and I guess uh just an example that happened to me and and now as I'm thinking about it, I don't think it was a. A violation, but I um I think Roger, you had sent me an email saying, be careful. Um it was in the very beginning when uh we were, when I was helping with the revenue forecast. And Leanna had presented the revenue forecast last year and there was something that I just wanted to clarify. And think, I think I sent an email out after the board meetings just to clarify uh uh, you know, something that Leanna had said. Um and I guess I wouldn't think that would be a violation of the open meeting law and I just want to confirm that.
So I think again, that comes down to. It's a little bit of um. A fine line and a- and it's like Jill and I were saying, you know, I think if it's just a factual clarification. Um but again, that when we do that by email, if it's substantive, it's not public in that forum. You know, so I think that's where it gets complicated.
Yeah, so then what would the process have been? It would have been for me to bring it up at the next. Meeting.
Yeah.
Clarify.
Or or ask that clarification directly to Leanna only.
Yeah.
Or to Leanna and Roger because the, but and actually, this is the thing. That that gets complicated with the committees because. If Roger and Leanna are both, correct me if I'm wrong, Leanna's a voting member of finance, right? And I forget the number, but I think once you hit three people that are in the finance committee, you have a quorum.
Yes, three of the three of you. Committee is currently five members, so three is a quorum of finance.
Right, so if if you want to clarify, only with Leanna is okay. But if you want, if you copied Roger, it's not because then there's three of you.
Right.
So.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's why often, you know, in governance, I'll say, just email back to me, you know what I mean? Um if you have a question.
Okay.
I just really, and I think not replying all is actually good life advice as well because it often goes awry, so just no.
Amen.
Now, just just a suggestion on something I've seen work before is, so I think finance is our trickiest one with Leanna being a voting member and. You know, key to the process. So if you have one-on-one communication, so let's say Bella sends her questions directly to Leanna and any other finance member sends. Questions to clarify. And then just as a matter of practice, I think at your next meeting. Leanna just quickly says, I just wanted to update in case anyone had questions, you know. Um these were the questions I received. These were the answers I provided. I'm not trying to complicate it, but I actually think as long as you keep it one-to-one. With like, you know, generally, that's why we have a chair of all the subcommittees as well. Finance just is a little bit different. Um so I would just suggest that. Work through the chair on the subcommittee and have that person be the the one-to-one getting the questions answered and then just report out for everyone's sake. Because those questions may not have occurred, but they may in the future.
Right. No, I think that's great advice, yeah.
Yeah, just straightforward, one-to-one and just share it the next meeting.
Yep.
Great advice.
All right. Any other questions for Sheila?
I'm gonna stop sharing.
Thank you, Sheila. I think you struck a good balance between keeping it brief and highlighting the key points that we all wonder about. Uh without going into, you know, all the detail that we should already be familiar with, so.
But really, if people have a question, don't hesitate to reach out to me, like if something comes up in a particular meeting or. Particular chain that you want some clarification on.
Excellent. All right, so I guess we're ready to move into our reports. So do you want to start with capital campaign, Laura?
Sure. Um so real quick, I'll just give some number updates. Um total to date is two hundred and fifty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-three. Um in December alone, um three thousand thirty-three dollars and seven cents. Came into the capital campaign, so I love these specific numbers. So thank you, Alan and Marcy for that. Um the other piece of news from a capital campaign and this sort of overlaps with the development committee. Um is just that we have a lot of overlap in our uh imagined campaign. Committee and our development committee. And so um. Because sometimes less can be more effective and powerful and doable, especially for our committee members who have been really fantastic um on both committees. On each committee and the overlapping ones on both committees. The development committee is actually going to meet quarterly. For at least the first half of twenty twenty-three. Um. It it really will sort of help us focus our efforts of some of these folks to where we really need it, which is. Ramp up the campaign and really starting to to make things churn. Um. So you guys may have seen a a change in the schedule, so we are going to skip our January development committee meeting. Uh we will meet in February, um and then we will meet again in May. Um so that calendar has been updated. Thank you, Sarah and Alan for kind of coordinating those pieces. And um if anybody has any questions or comments, you know, feel free to let me know. I'm happy to chat about it. Um and then in terms of the capital campaign, the only other thing that I want to kind of put out there as a gentle reminder. Is um to please keep eyes and ears and sort of thoughts open for referrals, folks that Ellen and Marcy can connect with. Talk to companies um that we should really be talking to. Um and and making connections with for the capital campaign and for the school in general. So that would be my. My plea, you'll probably hear that from me at every meeting from here on out. Um. But yeah, so that's that's sort of the the brief campaign update. I know Ellen has some stuff in in her report as well, so. That's that.
Laura. I think uh. I I see it as a positive that with any of the way of the way there, if we were shooting for two million dollars, we have a quarter million dollars already. I think that's great. You know, and and I expect this to be a hockey stick, so you know, we're starting slow. I'm gonna quickly accelerate how much we're gonna raise, especially now with. Marcy helping us, so. This is exciting.
I will say that just from my perspective, from the volunteer perspective, um just having Marcy on board has given us. Like it's a world of difference and that is not a slight to, you know, the team that we've had in place at all. But ju- like it's like Marcy and Ellen are becoming like the dream team and just from a a development and a volunteer perspective, it is. It it's amazing. So I'm I'm excited and I think you're right. And a lot of these campaigns do work in that way, right? It's slow to start. There's a peak and then it's like getting to the end. So. We're in a good spot, so I appreciate your optimism, Raul.
Excellent, always. All right, Ellen, give us more reasons to be optimistic.
I'll do the best I can. But more, thank you very much and um I I have to say that I wholeheartedly agree. It's. Really amazing to have somebody that's working and and thinking about this, um you know, twenty-four seven, making it a real priority, so. Um I'm gonna turn this into a slideshow. It's wonderful to see you all here and. Twenty twenty-three, it's kind of hard for somebody who was actually born in nineteen sixty-three to consider the fact that it's twenty twenty-three. Um but here we are. So welcome, everyone. All right, so here's our overview for this evening. We're gonna look at some PSAT data. And some plan to address um some of the gaps that we've been talking about this fall. Um you know, I'm thinking about this this data and really how nice it was to be in person um and looking at the SAT data and all the conversations we had. You know, the last time we were in person and MCAS data, I believe we did in person as well. Um you know, I think when we're reviewing data, it's it's it is, it's kind of nice to be able to bounce um thoughts and questions off each other, so. You know, just jot down any questions that you have and 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 I will um answer anything that I can and flip through slides for you. Um it's a little bit more difficult to do this um over over Zoom. Uh and then a quick little update on our uh diverse uh diversity, equity and inclusion. A small, quick building update, a little bit more on the capital campaign and the work that Marcy and I are doing. Little bit of razzle-dazzle time and then some upcoming events and we have some things coming up in January. All right, so here we go, the PSAT. Um you know, the PSAT historically has been. Um and you know, used for different reasons and it and it's used um. By the students, obviously, is it's an experience for them to get ready for the SAT, right? It's the P is the practice. And um and that's often the way that, you know, it can be kind of a predictor of how much, you know, students want it, how much time and study they want to put into it. Schools end up using the the uh the PSAT a little bit differently, which is why um AMSA has always done it and made week. There's two options, there's a Saturday test that's given out. Um or there's a a Wednesday test and AMSA has always committed to those Wednesday tests. We've taken a break from from other uh classroom activities to actually focus on the SAT, uh the PSAT and and let the kids do it. And we've started in ninth grade uh because we use the data. Uh especially, you know, in English and and math and Luba loves her her data. Uh but it's a, it's a great way to identify students who need extra support. It's also um. Get, they have another report that's called AP potential. Um and it is a way to identify students who may not be necessarily on your radar as as kids who are AP ready. Um and so that that's another another option um as well. But when you start to look at like this kind of data that we keep in Naviance and now we're keeping it in our new panorama program. Um you know, and you start to look at MCAS and you look at PSAT and you look at SAT and you're looking at the grades and the GPA. You know, it really does, not that our kids aren't more than numbers, they most certainly are, but when we're talking about data. Um and then you can add in, now with Panorama, we can add in their absenteeism, we can add in the discipline record. It's all there, each child. It really does start to paint a picture. Um and for us at this time in in history with everything with COVID and and all that. It is gonna be a huge help as Anders and I have been processing this over the last, since we got back from vacation. To help us to identify where are the gaps, where where are the places that we need to go back? Um and have some more uh work with the kids. So this here is just a comparison. Of PSAT scores. Now remembering, we didn't do the PSAT in twenty twenty. Um twenty nine, uh twenty nineteen, which is what I've been comparing to when we've been talking about other scores, I decided to use that as well. Um for for this PSAT comparison. So. The PSAT, I I did, as I mentioned, is also in ninth grade too. Uh we're looking at just the tenth and eleventh grade um data at this point. And when we look at twenty-two, these are the current eleventh graders and the current tenth graders. And so um the our mean score for the eleventh grade was eleven eighteen, for the tenth grade, you know, ten seventy. Very typical that your tenth grade scores are lower than the eleventh grade because they've seen less content. Um once again, we continue to be, you know, well above the state. I also have the national numbers. I didn't add them in just so it wasn't too much data on this slide. Um but we're, you know, the state is well above this, the the national and and we are above both. And yet, when you look back to two thousand and nineteen, you can see that there's some significant changes in the numbers. As we've mentioned in in previous conversations, it's a different class, right? These are different, different class, different kids. But we all know that it's also a very different time. Um and when we talk about this particular eleventh grade class, we're talking about students. Um and I think it's my next slide, these eleventh graders were in eighth grade in March of twenty twenty. So they spent the second semester of of twenty twenty at home and they spent a good chunk of ninth grade. Um at doing remote learning at home as well. Some never came back at the end of their ninth grade year. Um and then they came back. The next year was their tenth grade year. They were in masks. Um that was hard to navigate for a number of reasons in the classroom. Um and those masks didn't come off until March of twenty twenty-one, right, I think. So. Um just to kind of give you an idea of where where these students are. The difference really between this slide here is this is purely just talking about mean scores, just I wanted you to kind of get an an idea of yes. Just like the SAT scores for whatever, all the reasons that we talked about last month. But we're still seeing this this decline for AMSA and um. You know, Anders and I have gone back and forth with with words um. And you know, I I wouldn't call these numbers catastrophic by any means, right? This is, we're ahead of the state, we're we're ahead of the the national numbers. And yet, we're seeing, we're seeing a a a sizable blip that makes um us uncomfortable for AMSA. Right, for AMSA's standards. And so these are the things that we want to look at and address. One of the things that I do um like to focus on. Is is this next slide here where it talks about the the benchmarks and the percentage of students. Who have met the benchmarks. Um and so what I've done here, this was a lot of copy and pay and pasting, snipping and pasting, I should say, is I wanted you to be able to do a side to side comparison. Of twenty-two in two thousand and nineteen for the school and then lesser important really, but the state, but there for your reference. And when they talk about benchmarks. They're talking about. Are these students. Making progress towards being ready for the SAT, right? The SAT supposedly is a predictor of success freshman year in college. Uh PSAT is is, as we said, a practice. It's checking to see if this student is is on track to do well in the SAT and therefore do well their freshman year. Um these are from our eleventh graders this year. And and I honestly, these numbers I find a little bit more concerning. Um the other little piece of information that we we looked up is what do they mean by net benchmark? What what are the benchmarks and? I I did not love, and I don't know how. They're actually predicting this and I know, you know, Roger's um our math guy, but. To look at the statistics and the science behind it, I I just don't know. They are saying that students that meet, let's just take a look at that, they met the English um reading, writing. Eighty-six percent of them met that benchmark. Well, what do they mean by that? What they, what it said in the definition was that the benchmark, what it means is. That those, that percentage of students. By getting at least a four sixty in English. Should be able to earn at least a seventy-five percent. In their English class. I don't, I I and I'm not really sure what that that even means. Um but. What I, when I look at this, I'd like to to think of it more in in line of, are these kids kind of on track? Right? And um because I'm not really sure how college board determines that. A student who got at least a four sixty is gonna get a seventy-five. In in an English class because schools vary so much and the expectation varies, the grading system varies. So I like to kind of look at it more of, okay. Seventy-three percent of our current eleventh graders. Have met both both benchmarks. So they're more or less on track. Um but you can see in in twenty nineteen, eighty-eight percent of them met both benchmarks. Eighty-six percent for this year's class in English, but ninety-three percent. In English in two thousand and nineteen, seventy-eight percent in math. Ninety-one percent in two thousand and nineteen. So meeting non-nine percent. Currently, four percent for for two thousand and nineteen. So um so I look at those numbers now, we're talking about. Algebra, basically algebra one, geometry and algebra two. Pre-algebra is what we're talking about for these math PSATs. When you're talking about the SATs, it's going up to algebra two. I was, had a conversation with um somebody that that I have a great deal of respect for. He's one of our retired math teachers. He came to. To visit Anders and I this week and currently he he runs a um, like a math remediation program. Uh he at AMSA. And what he's doing is is students get referred to him, high school, all the way through sixth grade, down to sixth grade. And he and and one other um woman work with these kids and try to figure out where the gaps are. Um and and then how to fill them, right? And so he said he's seeing them, I, you know, I asked him, I said, please tell me, what are you seeing? Um what are the trends? What do you think the impact has been? And and we talked about these scores. And so he's been doing this now, he's been retired for about three years, so he's been doing this for about three years. He said that. Significantly more middle schoolers than he's been used to seeing. He said what he has with the high school kids is your, he's he's working on pre-calculus. With students or pre-calculus students. with students or pre-calculus students getting referred to him. But they are missing parts of Algebra I. Right? This is the Algebra I that they should have been learning in eighth grade and in ninth grade. It's very, very difficult to continue to build the pre-calculus skill, oh, I'm sorry, that, yes, I guess it was pre-calculus skills without the Algebra I and the early Algebra skills. So I think that's something that we're that we're we're fighting up against, bumping up against. And I asked him, you know, how he how he approaches this. Well, he has the ability, because of the number of kids involved, to actually work with these kids one-on-one, small groups, and he knows exactly where their deficits are. And so, you know, I think that we need to continue that, potentially expand that program. We need to find out which kids are are missing those Algebra I and those geometry. All of that data is here for the PSATs. Um and then potentially do the same type of program for English. Right? Because we're talking about, we have our our reading program, but writing skills and comprehension skills. So we've spent a lot of time talking about this. We will be um meeting with the department chairs this week and I think we'll have many weeks coming up where we will be pulling apart this this PSAT data, not only by grade, but really by student, right? And and as I said, we can, we can do all of that. Um and we need to come up with recovery plans for each one um of these students. We need to have a an overriding recovery plan with some actionable steps that will work with with the department chairs. But then, you know, also having this this plan um for each one of the students and going back and figuring out what what are you missing? Um and um and and reteaching those things to give them the foundation that they need, that they that they missed. Um we are also, we've been having conversations with the department chair since Thanksgiving around study skills. We're getting a lot of feedback from teachers um and from parents, honestly, saying that the kids don't know how to study. They're not really show how to organize themselves. Um and, you know, maybe they think they've studied, but all they did was read their notes over once and, you know, as grownups, we know that's not really studying. Um and so how to do that. And Anders has been doing a lot of research on on study skills. He's been, he's been going through other other colleges, um websites, he's found some wonderful resources. And we are working on that project as well with the department chairs to really um focus on how the school is going to roll out um a study skills, kind of a booster program. Uh let's see. And also, you know, as I mentioned, the the current program that we have right now with the mass support program, possibly extend extending that, expanding it. Um and also, you know, we hear a lot from from students of that they they don't really like to do a lot of reading and they don't really want to do a lot of writing and they don't like to take notes and um and but those things are all essential to their success um for their entire lives. And sometimes, you know, we do worry that if it's more than a, you know, a thirty-second tick tock. Um are they going to actually, you know, sit down and and do it? And and some certainly will, but we want to encourage more of them and and let them know how important it is for their futures. Okay, uh let's see. Um and Ed Committee, all of that information, um we can pass that all along to you and you can uh go along on this journey with us because we really need to um really need to to make sure the kids have all they need in place. All right, so we have a new webpage for our DEI um work and Peter Prue has been working on this with Mike Finkel. I I thank them both um very, very genuinely and deeply. Um the, we have a new DI mission statement. You can click on the the webpage here and you can see all of this. There's links to the each of the clubs um Instagram. You can see that's little screenshots there from the Instagram. Um and also the initiatives that we that we have for twenty twenty-three. The the students, many of them will be, and some of our teachers will be attending a connections conference in March of twenty twenty-three. And this is a great conference out in Sutton that they put together each year. About fifty schools come together and they attend workshops and um have speakers and it it's a, it's a wonderful um program. I've I've um participated in that remotely. And I also mentioned last month about the uh building beautification committee. Um and we we really want to, one of the focus of that committee will be to create visual representations throughout our buildings of just the diversity um of our community. Um and so that it's a welcoming, um colorful, warm. Um you know, where where students see themselves on our walls um and in our rooms. And so I would encourage you to take a look at that. That's going to be a continuing, it's going to be a live page because those Instagram um pieces are live and we'll be adding information to this um continually. So quick building update, just so you kind of have an idea of where we are. Well, the design drawings are in process right now and they're going to be due from the architects um on the first week of February. Um it will be after that, that then they go to the estimators again and we we um I believe it's by the end of February that we will have that, um those numbers to look at for the first, the first real go-through on those. Um the city of Marlborough, they're also kicking off all the permitting phase, which they had to wait till get, they get the all the SD drawings done, which are now done. And they've started working on the permitting of that. We have utilities um running a- as you as you drive in and you go by the nurse's office on the on the left uh in the morning and you're driving up between the buildings, that road, which is where the building, the new building is going to be. There are um electrical and gas lines that run through that road. They come down the hill and then they run off kind of running parallel to the woodchip area. And so um we have to move those. Um there's a possibility that they they'll just kind of cut them off and they'll lay new lines down. Um but it still has to be done. And so this um this is not on our timeline, which is one of the reasons why they're getting this going now, because you have to put in applications to the electrical company, to the gas company, and they finally schedule you in and it can take months to actually happen. I've been told that it'll be minimal disruption. Sometimes they'll even come and do it over over a weekend. It could be that it's way out to the summer, but I just want you to know that that is happening and if all of a sudden in March, when the ground starts to thaw, they say, you know what, we can come and do the electrical now. We're gonna just go ahead and 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 move it. Um because if anything ever happened and we still couldn't do the project in in August, we still want those lines to be moved. They can be used um and moved when we use that piece of ground when we're ready. Um so I don't think that that's going to be um, you know, anything that, we don't want to put that off because um we don't really have any control um over their timeline on that. All right, so a couple of things to add to to Maura's um update. Maura, thank you for um for giving our financial update. Um we did receive, uh Maura, this is new for you, a five-figure pledge today um with a lovely ha- half of it and a lovely check today and uh the the rest coming, so we're super excited about that. That number is not in the number that Maura gave uh gave us. We have a couple of big meetings coming up. We're looking forward to for next week. Uh Marcy's got us scheduled with one of the large banks um in in town. Uh someone that we haven't contacted before, so excited about that. And also, there's a new um local biotech firm that's actually opening a lab in Marlborough. Um and um they're going to be coming as as well out to do a um to do a tour and spend some time with us. And let's see, uh Marcy's still working on the the toolkit, that toolkit um that you will all see for the first time at the strategic planning meeting during our lunch in January. Uh Marcy's also going to spend just a little bit of time talking to the staff as well um for our all-staff meeting in February. And that's more or less going to be to to say to them, who do you know? You know, these are the elevator pitch, you know, these are the kinds of things if you're at a a gathering and you you see someone um that you might be able to bring up a conversation about your school. Um and we also feel that, you know, parents, especially as as things stop moving along. Um parents are going to go to teachers and they're going to say, what do you know? What do you guys need? And we want to make sure that they have um the answers to those to those questions as well. Um and also, what we've been working on too is um more video and written testimonials. These will be on the website. Um I know Mark and and um uh Maura have been talking to the alumni, meeting with them, and we're going to have the alumni involved in in some of these videos as well. So I think that's going to be really cool. Um and when we get we get some of those uh ready and buffed up, I will um I will let you know because I think that could be really, really amazing. Um she's also done some updates on on the ways to give. And she's also keeping um the website up to date with um a a letter from me. There was a new one that just, I believe, went up today, um wishing everyone a Happy New Year's with a with an update. So appreciate all of um Marcy's work for sure. All right, little bit of razzle-dazzle. All right, so I thought this was, I thought this was really cool. This, you know, there's some projects, you know, hands-on stuff is is fun for the kids. Um and it's fun for us to look at. So this is um a history class. This is sixth grade history, ancient Egypt. Uh this is one of our new teachers, uh Miss Ellie Kaufman. And the kids created mummies um for uh for their substituting oranges for the, as the little pharaohs. And so they actually scooped out the quote-unquote organs, as you can see there, and they refilled it with this preservative. It's a sodium-based preservative um into the body and then they wrapped it in linen. Um and then the mummies, you know, were in their tombs um all over break. So I'm not sure what the kids found when they came back from break, but you can see on the bar picture um that they're all wrapped um in the linen and the kids, um there were some cute pictures with kids like going eww and things like that, but they look like they were having, they were having a good time. Um and you can see the different worksheets out. I just thought that too, that it was so important for you to see that this is, these are fun activities, they handle on activities. My guess is someday, these kids will be telling their kids about the time that they mummified oranges um when they were in sixth grade and and what a great teacher they had. Um but also those worksheets that go along with that, to make sure that learning is happening um right along with that hands-on experience and it's so much more powerful when it's coming in through all different um senses. So I thought that was fun. And then this one, uh Dr. Claridge, for for any of you folks who know Dr. Claridge, he teaches both eighth and eleventh grade physics. And um and he he is a character um just in in so many ways. But he's also a musician. And if you ever come to this school, um sometimes early in the morning, um certainly in the summer, every day in the summer when he's he's there. He plays a beautiful flute and pipe. And he will go to the top of the foyer and he plays out into that gorgeous, beautiful uh foyer and the sound is just absolutely amazing. Um he is um, he is a real, he's a real trip. And um what he was working with the kids on this little video that I'm going to show you, it's just thirty-three seconds long. Um is, you know, about waves and wave properties. And in particular, he was talking about musical instruments and having standing waves. And so then he was teaching the kids how to actually create standing waves using various types of strings and ropes. And so we would see them outside doing it and sometimes it was a thick rope and sometimes it was a really thin string. Um and so they got to see, you know, so not so, not so easy. But I'm not sure if you'll be able to hear this. It's just fun to watch them. As they make it a mistake, they're like, nope, 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 wait a minute. Yay! So, oh. Okay, so just kind of just wanted to show you once again the importance of the hands-on work. And as we look at our new building and the new classes and the space that we're going to have, the importance, especially for for this generation, to get them up and moving, get their hands on things um and um and help in their in their learning. And now, I'm not a hundred percent sure how to stop that. Little thing there. Okay, all right. And here are upcoming events. And we have fifth grade uh family info sessions. These are done, these are recruitment. Um and there's one on the twelfth and the twenty-sixth. Mike Naraki does these with um with Linda Edwards, our our registrar. And along with uh special education is there, ELL. These also have both um Portuguese and Spanish interpretation um that they go into um into the the little classrooms in Zoom and and they do all the um all the translation for for the folks, the families who need it. We also have a couple of family forums coming up. These will be at ten AM. They will be virtual. Um and it's so much easier, we can record them and then post them for people to see at their at their uh leisure. And that first one is January eighteenth and then May fourth is the next one. We have a winter concert coming up. Now, some of you may remember, we used to do Arts Night mid-year and then we would do another Arts Night at the end of the year. Um last year, we tried the Arts Night and the Science Night together and it went very well. People were very happy with it, so that will be in the spring. But the winter concert will be the music, right? That will be Jazz Band, uh not, it's not Jazz Band anymore, it's the American Band uh with Ed Harlow, with uh acapella, Jess Bowen will have her chorus there. And that will be on campus if you'd like to come up at six PM on January twenty-fourth. And as I mentioned, board planning meeting, we will have a light breakfast for you. We will have lunch for you. It will be up in the Apostoglu Cafeteria um at eight thirty, beginning at eight thirty on January twenty-eighth. Also, just to kind of put it um on um in the back of your mind, uh March fourth is the International Festival and they're adding a talent show onto it this year. It's going to be at the Hudson Elks, that's where it was last year. So looking forward to um to this event and kind of um interested on on what's happening with the talent show. Jazz Band played last year and they were unbelievable. The the twelfth graders were just amazing. And then just so it's on your calendar, um graduation will be Friday, June ninth, over four kicks, um Class two thousand and twenty-three. So Happy New Year, everyone. I hope it's a happy, healthy and joyful one for you, filled with peace and as much sleep as you need. Um and if you, anyone have any questions or anything?
Thank you, Ellen. And we lost, I mean, at least I lost your video. I'm not sure if.
Oh, did you not see it?
No, you're, the video of you, we don't see you.
Oh, okay.
Maybe we'll have to turn it off and on again, but.
Well.
Hmm.
I'm, I think what I'm, I think what I'm going to do is I will stop sharing here somehow.
That's okay, we can hear you.
Okay.
But.
Alrighty.
Thank you for the update.
All right, any questions on anything?
Uh Ellen, I have a question on the uh early part of the presentation about uh the PSAT
Yep.
numbers. Um was the, was the twenty nineteen school year representative of our past history? You know, was.
Um, I can, I can, I can look back because I, well, I, in my own files, I have everything back to when I got to AMSA in two thousand and fifteen. Um I mean, we've always done really, really well, Roger. It always, you know, it varies a little bit because.
I'm just trying to see that, you know, I'm just trying to get a feeling whether our math and English scores from twenty nineteen were about our mean or was that an exceptional year or was that a bad year, photograph of a bad year relative to our past history?
I would say our past history is closer to what we saw in two thousand and nineteen.
Right, but so nineteen was a representative year.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Um when I would bring these numbers to to each of, you know, to each one of these board meetings each year, it was always kind of the same old story. Um and and you know, that's really what's what's concerning is that it it's not the same old story. We've got some, we've got some gaps to fill.
Yeah, looking, looking forward to to working with you um or more data, especially the what stood out to me was the difference in the math scores.
Yes.
Thirteen, we dropped thirteen percent.
Yeah.
And and we'll also would be interested, maybe maybe again, schedule some time with you to look at like the overall shape of the curve.
Yeah, you know, I I can tell you, I can tell you that even nationally and statewide, math took the biggest hit during COVID.
Oh, that doesn't surprise me at all.
Yeah, right, 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 exactly. Um because you can still have the kids write, you can still have them read when they were at home. But I, you know, what our math teachers were trying to do on on whiteboards and 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 things, um you know, how do you, how do you teach a kid math if you can't stand beside him and 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 watch them move the pencil and and have the, you know what I mean, and come up to the board and it's so hands-on. And um and and that's what I heard from Dave Peters was was just that, that's what he's seeing.
And it's also, from what I've seen, um math very much builds on itself.
Mm-hmm.
Um so if you miss it, it's sort of like building the Jenga tower. You're missing a piece early, the rest of it just doesn't make sense or it's a very un-unsteady foundation.
Exactly, which is why we've got to go back.
I'm really looking forward to what what you and and the math department in particular, you know, how you know, we are, we are where we are. How do we recover? How do we get back to, how do we help our students get back to where they were?
Yeah, I can tell you that the math department and, you know, led by Luba Schmidt is is already on it and they are already addressing it. They've already had to make tweaks um to the curriculum and shifting things around. Um and so if this isn't some. and so this isn't something new to Luba. This is new data that we have out because these scores just came up for break. Um, that it really shows, um, you know, some of the younger kids and, and the impact, I think. But um, but yeah, we'll be having a lot more conversations about it.
Great, looking forward to it. It's a big challenge for us.
It is.
Right?
Anything else?
All right. Thank you for teaching us about mummified oranges. I never told those two words.
It's amazing. Just one other little quick story because Lisa Tebow is, is somebody I also just love and respect so much. And Lisa teaches, you know, eighth grade um, uh, science. And so her husband cut down a small tree in the yard that kind of had fallen over. And um, he was gonna, you know, get rid of the wood. And she said, I chased him down. Don't, don't, don't. There's beautiful moss on that. There's beautiful moss on that. And so, you know, Lisa brought in, and so he cut them all about twelve inches for her. And they're on this cart and, and I found a, a piece of wood and, and Anders is like, I think that's Lisa Tebow's wood. She brought in a bunch of these logs. And so right out in front of the door, she's got all these logs and had the most beautiful green moss. It looked like it came out of Ireland. But those are who our teachers are, right? She was thinking the whole break, she was so excited to bring this moss into school. And I mean, our kids, this is why they do so well.
Yeah, excellent. And to your point, it's the importance of, of project-based enhancement.
Zach?
I just wanted to say thank you for finally explaining why there was a cart of logs of wood in the middle of the hallway today. I was so confused by that.
Didn't it have pretty moss on it?
It was gorgeous. I was just like, why is this here?
All right, the building project.
Ellen, not a comment about what you told us, but I just wanted to say that I think you folks are doing a, a great job. I know that hiring to fill in for paternity leaves, maternity leaves, my son was saying that he's got a former student leading his directed study uh and it's going great. Um, so I know how hard it is to find staff right now uh and throughout the year. So especially with Amanda and Mike on the call, I think you guys are all doing fantastic. Uh, keeping us staffed in a challenging time. So just thank you all.
Thank, thank you very much. Um, yes, Deja is wonderful and happy to have her. Our, we have a number of our, our students, they come back and they sub for us. And they have really been, been super. Uh, but she has just gotten her degree to be an elementary school teacher. So we're going to see if we can maybe persuade her to to consider middle school. Thank you. But she's all licensed, so.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Ellen? If not, we can move on to the parent rep report, Laura, if you're ready.
Yeah, so I actually have quite a bit of feedback this time around. Um, I don't know, maybe it was the time of year, maybe because I offered people to give some of it anonymously. Um, so just pulling up my screen where I tried to summarize it. Um, so it really covers a, a lot of different areas. So I'll just kind of hit upon some of the feedback. Um, I guess I'll start with the concerns versus praise. Um, you know, so I did hear um from one parent with some frustrations about just special ed and mixed experiences with teachers when it comes to working with students who have an IEP or neurodivergent issues and things like that. Um, you know, and the parent made a point, and I won't name names, to say some teachers were amazing. Um, and then others just really seemed to lack understanding of, of how to work um with her child um, to the point where she felt like they were belittling the student. Um, she was having a hard time setting up meetings, but um, I had some back and forth with her and she, it sounds like some did get set up. Um, but it sounds like it was just a frustrating experience. Um, I heard from some parents of eighth graders just with concerns um about the challenges of eighth grade, just balancing quite a lot of classes. My son is in eighth grade too, so I, I think it's like, yeah, it's roughly twelve classes between um all the different sciences and things like that. Um, and just felt for that age, it, it was quite a bit. Um, and some of the eighth graders are having, you know, a lot of homework, which is making it challenging to do. Um, and they also expressed an interest, you know, in seeing some elective options for eighth graders at that point because it still is very prescriptive and kind of doing what they're told. Um, traffic issues. So definitely some concerns from parents just about the traffic around AMSA and, you know, we all know where it's located. Very few students could actually walk or bike there. Um, so there is quite a bit of parent drop-off traffic. Um, and noting how, you know, wait times, traffic can be really unpredictable, especially, you know, you kind of end up going through busy parts of Marlboro or on a highway to get there. Um, I guess some people don't like, I, I think some students get to tensions for being late. Um, so having, being late be a punishable offense. Um, when there are so many issues around traffic and, you know, one pointed out, it kind of incentivizes parents to drive a little more recklessly if they're trying to avoid their student getting detention. Um, so, you know, suggested should attendance be taken slightly later? Should detentions not be the answer for being late? Um, that's just some concerns. And I mean, I've noticed, you know, some mornings I get there in half the time, other mornings it takes me twice as long when I do the carpool driving. Um, so yeah, it isn't always consistent. Um, moving over to class of twenty-twenty-three parents, just some concerns about making sure the students have a positive senior year and they were displeased about trips and other activities that have been canceled. Um, and that, you know, some of the parents want to be, you know, able to make some more memorable experiences and wanna, and feel like they can be empowered to do so, um, and not getting blocked from doing so. Um, a concern from a parent about their child being bullied in a class. This is a middle schooler. And they said the teachers don't seem to be noticing or doing anything about it, so they're kind of helpless on what to do. Um, so I do want to follow up online to make sure I follow up with this person to point them in the right direction. Um, but anyway, we're talking about the math PSAT scores. I heard some concerns specifically about the gaps in math knowledge. Um, and that, you know, one concern too is that there were, there has been teacher turnover and long-term subs in the math department. And, you know, this parent has noticed gaps in math knowledge compared to other children, um, you know, who are older. Um, you know, and one parent said their child's kind of unsure about pursuing advanced classes like AP Math because they don't feel as confident in it. Um, and they felt like the math instruction was not always consistent. Um, so the, the more effective math instructors and consistency was at the higher levels and not necessarily at the middle to lower levels. Um, I had a parent reach out and I have to say, I do, I agree with this parent's suggestion. Um, they would really like to see the middle schoolers get some kind of ten-minute break worked into the day. I know my son at Quinn Middle School does have that and gets outside and it's still a huge part of his day and a much needed part of his day. Um, and that moves, middle schools do offer some kind of break time, but the AMSA middle schoolers don't get it. Um, you know, to have a chance to get outside and, and get a mental break and just be social a little bit. Um, and then I heard concern just about the lack of music options as part of sort of the arts education during the day as school instruction. There's only the art class. Um, that's really an option for the arts. Um, and then especially in middle school when, you know, I know in high school it kind of students segue into different areas, but it's usually a little bit more available. Um, and, you know, some parents would like to see this as something more than just an after-school activity. Um, and again, with people kind of seeing the, the plans for the future and the building plans, it doesn't seem like expanding the arts um is, is part of that. Um, I had a complaint about just inconsistent email responses from teachers and someone was wondering, you know, if there was a policy because some reply quickly, others take days. Um, and they just thought it was inconsistent. Um, I had one reach out and mention their child did the summer math program and they thought it was fantastic and really great. Um, but they did say, you know, in the summer, the full day was a little long, so if it was done again, which would be a good thing, you know, having a shorter day of like a half-day might be a better option for the students. Um, then definitely some, some good feedback. Um, you know, definitely I had someone reach out just to say they want to share kudos to all the teachers because they noticed how many are balancing all the classes they're teaching along with advising all these extracurricular activities after school. Um, and was asking as a parent, what more, you know, could AMSA do or they could do to support them and and advocate for just more time professional development for them. Um, so definitely a parent recognizing the teachers going above and beyond. Um, and then um, I did have, I'm gonna assume it's a junior or senior, but someone at the high school level just reached out to say they're having such a positive experience working with the counseling team um, about college planning. So it sounds like they're very pleased um with how that is going so far. And that is my very long summary of feedback. So like I said, it was sort of um a vocal time of year. Um, and I appreciate, I just got the, the bullying report, so I'll share that with that parent. Um, yeah, and if you have, some people left a feedback anonymously, some I do have their information, so I can directly follow up. So if there's anything else kind of I brought up and in these concerns you think would be good for me to follow up with a parent on, please share that resource.
Yeah, I have a couple um thoughts for you. That, that, yes, the bullying was on, was, thank you, Mike, for adding that in there, but that's, that form, that's all on the website. All our protocols are there, the process. But I would also, you know, I, I suggest that they follow the communications protocol, which is also on the website, which is to talk to the teacher. Make sure that the teacher i- is, is hearing it or seeing it, bring it to their attention so they can keep an eye a little bit more closely on it. Then also the dean of students, right, is, would be the next uh layer of defense there. Either Anthony Montes or Danny Amrell, depending upon um the grade. Um, and then, you know, just kind of moving through the process like that, along with that, that bullying reporting form. Um, so that, that's one, one thought. The, on the, at any time that we know that there's a traffic accident, that there's construction, we hold attendance. We always hold attendance. Um, when Mike and I first started, you know, principal and VP, I think way back in the beginning, the AMSA really didn't have very much of an attendance policy or a detain, or, or a, or a late policy. And it was a mess. And so what ends up happening is you don't have any kind of detention policy or something that helps motivate kids to get there. They're going to miss the first five or ten minutes of class and it, it only seems to kind of get worse when they get older. And so the only way that we were able to kind of get that into, in control um was, was to have some type of a progressive um, uh, program put in place to, to, to incentivize kids to, to get to school on time. But anytime, honestly, like I was on four ninety-five last week, I got caught in something, I immediately let the front desk ladies know, hold attendance. There's a problem on four ninety-five. And, and we, we all do that. There's never any penalty for, for any of that, or even if the traffic gets backed up in the rain. Um, the kids are not penalized for that either. So we, we really try to be careful with that. Um, and then the, the mom that was worried about, or the parent, parents, excuse me, that was worried about math, I would say once again, communications protocol, talk to the teacher. Um, then Luba Schmidt, right? Um, these are, are really important people to talk to and they're the people who are on the front line. They asked about the email. Once again, communications protocol, just haven't searched that. It has everything in there about what they can expect from the teachers for communication and what they, the steps are to communicate from within the school. Um, and the last one is the eighth grade and the curriculum. Um, they, the science classes are all four science classes. And actually, the whole school was designed to um overlap those science um classes so that they're very, very ready and well above. It's all part of the advanced part of, of who AMSA is. Um, and so that they're very ready. By the time that those kids take ninth grade biology, they've already had biology in sixth grade, seventh grade and eighth grade and built and built and built and built. So that they have so much foundational knowledge to go in, in ninth grade. And that's what we do all the way around. So it is a law. We know it's a law. Um, the math, the science um teachers don't give um homework. Those classes were every other day, but it really is to create the foundation of knowledge so that they'll be super successful in high school. So we, we do ask parents to kind of um, you know, help the kids kind of bear with it. If it gets to be too much, please reach out to the teachers um, and, and work with them. They are all compassionate, understanding folks. Um, and, and I'm actually kind of surprised that none of the parents mentioned that the kids had a two-week homework break over, over the vacation.
Oh, I loved that. I will, a lot of the feedback came in before vacation. I will say that, that was wonderful. Um, I do appreciate that. Yeah, I mean, great. Yeah, I think it's less, it's less, yeah, of the content, but more just, these are kids still very much developing their organizational skills, their executive skills and, you know, juggling um, a lot of different, different teachers and different subject areas and, and different schedules. Um, yeah, and, and some kids do better with it than others, for sure.
Yes, absolutely. I agree. Absolutely. Um, but if you're interested in some of that information, which is, is fascinating actually, also on the website is our charter, the original charter and how it was written. Um, and maybe uh that will help folks if they're interested on why some of those things are set up the way they are in the middle school. Thank you.
I just wanted to throw something out there. Sorry, I'm not trying to be less talkative, but um, I worked with two parents recently. I, I feel like I sometimes am the default Maynard contact because we're so close out here. Um, so I worked with two parents recently. One was actually today and one was before break. Uh, one was about math and just sort of ramping up to ma, to AMSA level math in sixth grade. And then another one was bullying separate families. And I think one of the things that I think, the only thing I think I bring to the table is I can direct them to the right person. And in both cases, I was really happy um getting people to the right person in the communication tree. Both, both completely different situations, both parents raved about um Mike's help, Mike Naraki's help, uh, the counselor's office. So I just, it's so hard because I know it's more, in any organization, you're more likely to hear the complaints, but I hope people know that in a lot of cases, our staff are shining through. And when we can connect people at the right time, um, I do feel like there's a willingness in the AMSA faculty and staff to try to help as much as they possibly can. So putting nothing to what Laura's reporting, I wrote it all down. I, I think that's really great for us to know. It'll be great as survey season comes around. Um, but just wanted to throw in that I've had two examples. Our parents were really happy once they got the right person.
Thank you. And Lauren, I'm gonna add that, thank you. You've taken the, your job of, of bringing up the parent feedback very seriously and the, the detail that you have provided to the board is very helpful. So whether every single one of those parents or every single one of those comments, you know, that they feel that their issue has been resolved or not, at least we know about it and we're discussing it and, and being aware of it. So that, that to me is helps because, you know, part of it is, is hard to um, I guess it's easy to overreact when you hear any piece of feedback. You want to solve it, but you also don't want to change what the school's doing because we might already be addressing things some way. But if we hear the same kind of feedback over and over, it helps uh try to identify those trends so we can think, you know, think whether or not we need to change things. So thank you for that and, and thank you for sharing that.
And I think what's great too is sometimes there are things, like I said, the, the break thing for middle schoolers, like not always top of my mind, but again, when my sixth grader comes home, that's still like the highlight of his day. You know, the fifteen minutes he got to go play outside and kick around the soccer ball or something. Um, so I think it, what's helpful too is as other people hear these suggestions, it's like, gosh, you know, um, I, I really do agree with that. So it's helpful. I think if if people just listen in or follow along or read the notes, you know, and and want to offer other, you know, building upon that for suggestions, it's good.
Hmm, thank you. Any other comments on the feedback from the parents? Anybody else? All right. Thank you, Laura, for, for the report again. I, I think getting, continue to get the feedback to the level that you're doing. I think it's a positive thing. So let's do it. And thank you for all the parents that stepped up to, to share their feedback.
And Mike also, it looks like Mike Finkel put in the communications protocol here. Um, so you've, you've got some resources here to um.
And we can make that part of the minutes, right, Sarah? I mean, I'm not saying that the minutes are the best place to find information, but it's all on the website. But uh, for anybody.
So you want, you want the policy in the minutes?
No, the policy, the link.
Okay.
If anybody's.
That's what I meant.
Yes.
Put both li- there's two links. They're in the, uh, chat.
Yeah. Because I don't believe the chat gets streamed with the streaming. So nobody other than those are assumed. We'll see it, uh, for now. All right. Um, with that, um, Sag, you ready for the faculty rep report?
Communication.
I have, I have received no information to bring to the board for this month. So very short report.
We will hear from the teacher soon as, as the year gets started. Sounds good. So I guess there'll be a short report. So then I'll move on to chair business. Um, you may recall that back in September, I mentioned the survey task force is something that we typically formed back then. And this year, since we decided to do only one, one survey a year, uh, I was gonna wait to appoint that and I, I kind of opened it up for, for the board members to step up to that. So now, today in January, I'm gonna officially appoint the survey task force. Um, doesn't mean that, you know, if, if you want to join that task force later on, you can't. I'm just, this is just a way to get the process started. Um, so I, I've talked to Dawn and, you know, Dawn has graciously offered to chair the survey task force. And, um, you know, I know that Lynn McCloskey has always helped from, uh, from the staff perspective and she's very familiar with the process. So she'll also be a member of, of that task force. And Dawn, did you confirm? Sorry, I muted myself. Did you confirm, um, that, um, anybody else that, to make sure that they're okay joining the task force?
Uh, no, I was gonna send out that email tomorrow. When I saw this on the agenda, I wasn't exactly sure. So. But I'll send out an email to everyone, uh, trying to get a few more folks to join in.
Excellent. All right. So for now, it's just, uh, Dawn and Lynn. Um, if anybody on the call right now wants to step up for, for that, I, again, when I joined the board, when I wasn't a parent, uh, that was a great opportunity for me to learn about the school. So I, I don't, uh, regret doing that when I started because it helped me understand what was going on at AMSA when I didn't have much experience with the school. And I think it will be a much simpler process now since we're kind of deciding that we're gonna stick with the questions we have and, and make it simpler because we also have other sources of feedback for the board and, and for the community as well. Um, so we'll hear more from Dawn in the, in the coming months. Next up, um, January 28th. I think we talked about this in the December meeting, but, um, and I, I forget if, if I mentioned this last time we talked, but we do have, um, people from board on track coming to present to us about the, the board setting, you know, the, the goal-setting process and board goals versus administration goals. But I know it's something that we've talked in the past. Somebody has some, some great job of preparing some of the information that we have prepared from the past. So we're not starting from scratch. And we have a plan that I, I know we discussed in the last board meeting. So I guess all I need to tell you is if, um, you have time to review the kinds of things that I shared over email back then, uh, please do so. But other than that, uh, what's most important is your presence on January 28th. And like Ellen said, we'll have breakfast at eight 30. So that's our incentive to get there on time. We're gonna start promptly at nine o'clock with the presentation because they're gonna be presenting remotely. But then most of the day will be more of a working session and we'll try to make it, uh, interactive and exciting. And so I think the preparation is, is well in the way for that to be a very productive session. And it will be a great opportunity for us to get together and talk about the school in the future and have, this is our opportunity to think about the long term. So strategic planning is more about setting goals, not just for this year or the next year, but, you know, three to five years out, uh, and that's really the intention. So, um, I don't think I have anything else to add to that, other than we'll see you on the 28th at eight 30. So moving on to the search process for ED, I don't know, Dawn, if you want to take this over? Uh, or do you want me to give a quick?
Is my audio causing problems? Are we good?
Nope. You sound great.
Great. Uh, so a quick update. Uh, as you all know, we have a consultant guiding us through the process. Uh, the consultant has spent, um, the last, hmm, probably four, five, six weeks, uh, taking in resumes. The job has been posted since the seventh. Um, and the great thing about the consultant is, you know, they're going through them, weeding through them and sort of helping us categorize. Uh, I believe they had 27 resumes sort of that, uh, were worth looking at, qualified folks. Uh, and they have helped us narrow that down. The committee met this week. Uh, and we talked about creating sort of a medium-sized list of people to start actually interviewing. So that's exciting. Uh, interviews will begin in January and that will be our search committee. We'll conduct those interviews with the, um, consultant on the, on the Zoom as well. Uh, we'll have a few days set aside for that. And then, let's see, what else? Uh, once we get down to a short list of two or three top candidates, um, we will, they will be invited and the consultant, uh, and I'm sure Anders will be a great help, uh, arranging each of them to spend a day at AMSA's campus. So, um, we'll make the candidates available to stakeholders and there'll be, sort of, be more information on that. But, uh, but yeah, things are starting to heat up. So we're reviewing, we are interviewing, we are thinking about next steps, having them on the campus. And then Raul, uh, it occurred just a few minutes ago, we should start thinking about, we'll probably need some extra board meetings in February, um, in terms of starting to really, hopefully, if all goes well, start to finalize things. Um, so we should be starting to think about the fact that we'll probably need some extra meetings amongst ourselves scheduled. So just something coming attraction.
And I would assume that would be mostly executive sessions since, I mean, if, if we're doing any kind of negotiation and whatnot.
Yeah, I think I will check, uh, with Sheila and Jill unless they have a quick answer, but I believe it's generally, uh, public interview, but executive session is for just the negotiations portion. So. And the idea, at least when I've done these in the past, um, is for full transparency to the community as well. Um, so to see, um, the, you know, their, our questions to the candidates, their candidate answers, and then anything to do with, um, an offer and things like that usually qualify for executive session. But I would, I will absolutely double check with governance. So that's, uh, that's the update. Things are moving along, heating up.
Yep. We'll be busy in January. So looking forward to making progress. All right. Next logistical question to everybody. Are, uh, Sheila just reminded us with our OML training, our provision or order to be able to continue to do remote meetings, at least for now, expires in March. So that leaves us a question, at least for the, the ones that we have on the horizon. We know for sure that we're getting together in person on the 28th. And then we have two more board meetings in the horizon for February and March. Um, if you remember, we kind of discussed saying, let's alternate. So now in January, we decided to do this remotely. Um, do we want to go back to in person for February 16?
It's my birthday and I'd love to be able to do it from home.
All right. That's a factor.
Sixty.
Yes.
I don't even think we should meet on Ellen's birthday. You had a, that's a, that's a low ask on your end, Ellen. I don't know.
Yes.
That's okay. I really, I don't mind. We did it on Laura's birthday one year.
I know. Yeah, I remember that.
I, I won't be really probably celebrating that night, but it would be nice to be, be home. But, you know, I was actually thinking like winter cold, dark early.
Well, technically we are alternated because our next meeting is the strategic planning session. So that will be in person. So we can go back to, so let me suggest this. We, we meet remotely on the 16th. We add an agenda item to wish Ellen happy birthday in whatever way we can be creative. And then on the 23rd, we'll meet in, in March, uh, we meet in person. Does that sound like?
There is a possibility that meetings from then on will be in person. So just thought I'd mention that.
Yep. Yeah. But if we plan them ahead, I, I, you know, sometimes not knowing for sure to, it, it's better to plan ahead. So. I'm just gonna say, let's do the February remotely, March in person. Unless anybody disagrees. All right. Good. All right. Committee reports. I think Development, you're good, Mara, unless you want to add anything to what you already said, right?
The only thing I would add, um, is that I just want to give kudos to Mark. He's actually been working with the Alumni Association Alumni Committee, um, and then been making some really good headway, um, along with, uh, Stacia, who is also one of our teachers filling in, uh, right now. So, um, they've got some events. There's a new Google form, um, for alumni to participate in the Back to the Future event, which is scheduled, actually, is it tomorrow? Is it still happening tomorrow? Yes. Excellent. Um. So that, that's kind of a, a big deal. I think anybody who's ever known about it, heard about it. So that's one of the things, um, and then they're talking about reunions and they're talking about a whole bunch of other stuff to really engage our alum population. So, um, that's exciting and that's gonna be ongoing. So we'll kind of keep everybody up to date on that as well. That's it.
Excellent. Thanks. Roger, uh, Education Committee.
Um, the Education Committee did meet in December. Uh, we're continuing to look at, mid, continuing to look at measures for success for the, for the school. And I'll have more, more details after our January meeting.
Excellent. Sheila.
Um, Governance did not meet, so I do not have an update for Governance.
Yeah. I do something related to Governance that I maybe, um, I mean, I can mention it now. Um, if you remember, we voted in the last meeting about the BIBLs change. These has approved that change. So we're good to go and we're gonna start, you know, we have already started talking to Ellen about filling that position that we created as the Capital Projects Director. Uh, so expect a vote for February. At least we'll put it in the agenda, you know, whether we're ready for or not in February, you know, we have time, but if we can get it between now and February, we'll, we'll do it, we'll do it then. Um, so just Governance made me think of that. So make sure everybody was aware of that update.
Thanks.
I bel- I believe I just wanted to add that, um, you voted to recommend, you voted to, um, request that amendment. And when the commissioner approved it, it was in effect at that time.
Okay. Excellent. So we have, the BIBLs have been amended. Um, I guess the only detail we're sharing is that they, um, they clarified that that position is a temporary arrangement. So there's a limit of how long we can have that job there unless, you know, the, the BIBLs will change again in a few years. I think it was like 2026 or something like that. Yeah, three years. So, um, that, you know, other specific detail about that, which I don't think it's particularly material, but, you know, just sharing. All right. Now Finance, Roger.
Yes. Um, so Finance Committee did meet in December. Um, and we, we had a, we had a very good, good, we had a good discussion regarding, uh, capital projects and cash reserves overall. You know, I feel that the Finance Committee has a lot of work to do to understand AMSA's financial position so that we can make a recommendation on whether to move forward with the project in March.
And I know that part of that's making sure we, that was one of the questions why I brought up the open meeting discussion because it's making sure we have that detail. And, and I know there's been a lot of work put into making sure we have a good way of looking into the future as much as we can. So we, we're not putting the, taking in a lot of risk by, by, you know, spending on the building, which I think is definitely worthwhile. So.
Yeah, we definitely do need to look at, um, all, all the, we, we definitely need to look at all, all parts. We need to look at the cost of the building. We need to look at our projected, our current budget, our projected budget going forward, our existing capital, uh, infrastructure needs and the success of the, uh, capital, uh, campaign. And Ellen, congratulations on the, uh, 100, uh, the, the, the large donation to AMSA. That was great news.
All right. So as we get closer to March, I'm, I'm sure we'll have more details on, on all those specifics so we are ready to make a, a, a full commitment to the project. Um, excellent. Any action items so far? So thank you, Roger, for the Finance Committee. I don't think we got much of, as far as action items throughout today, right, Sarah?
The only thing I have is for me to, um, put the links in the, in the minutes.
I feel like all the action items end up being one use. I'll make sure, I'll make sure to balance that out. Um, agenda items for next meeting in February. I think we added two things there that I, I'm pretty sure we're gonna have to, uh, make part of the agenda. One is if, um, to, to have that approval of a contract. So if we have a discussion with Ellen about the Director of Capital Projects position, so that would be on the agenda for February. And then, uh, prove the goals that, so, you know, part of what we want to set as a, as an outcome of meeting on, on the strategic planning meetings to have, uh, board goals that we then bring into the full board meeting for approval. So those are the two that we had there. Anything else that, um, I may have missed? All right. We always review the ideal board calendar just to make sure the, the things that we're supposed to do each time we, we don't miss. Excellent. With that, I guess we move on to meeting effectiveness. Any feedback, comments? We'll be ready to call our night since Ellen wished us more sleep than in 2020. Going once, going twice. All right. So I'm, I'm gonna take no feedback to mean that we're, we're being efficient with our.
All set.
All right. All right. So I think we're ready for a motion to adjourn if everybody wants to. A motion to adjourn. It's Ben.
Who was that Ben? Okay.
Yeah.
To adjourn.
I'll second that.
Raul, second. All right. I'll record. Bella Gorman?
Yes.
Ben Hamel?
Yes.
Don Capello?
Yes.
Jill Schaefer?
Yes.
Laura Burgess?
Yes.
Laura Webster?
Yes.
Nick Poirier?
Yes.
Frowle Forrest?
Yes.
Roger Jarrett?
Yes.
Sheila Kelly?
Yes.
And Zachary Prescott?
Yes.
The motion passes. We'll see you guys at the end of the month, not before.